Good evening and welcome to the April 6, 2020 meeting of the Common Council of the City of Richmond, Indiana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Doug Goss.
Here.
Kelly Cruz-Nicholson.
Here.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Jeff Kappa.
Here.
Jeff Locke.
Jeff Locke is...
He said here.
He's here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Ron Oler.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
And Larry Parker.
Larry's the one having trouble calling in.
Eight and a half are present.
All right, good to... So, thank you everyone for putting up with us tonight, special meeting of the Common Council of the City of Richmond, Indiana, following our emergency protocol. We don't have the usual agenda. We're going to talk about some ordinances, we'll have comments from the mayor. Before we get started, I would like to recognize that today, April 6, 2020, is the 52nd anniversary of our downtown explosion. And we're also in the middle of a different type of explosion. So, somebody needs to mute their mic, stand by. There we go.
Should be better.
So, we're a different type of explosion with the, yes, coronavirus pandemic. So, take a moment of silence and we'll think about our first responders and our healthcare professionals out there serving as well. All right, thank you. In your packet was the minutes of our regular meeting, March 16, 2020. We'll do these two separate.
Mr. President.
And the my one back to the phone. Yes, Mr. Goss.
If there are no corrections, I move that we approve the minutes for our March 16, 2020 meeting.
Sorry. You can't hear me. You went back to the phone, Kate.
We can hear you, Larry.
There's a thing that happens, and one person joins by phone and knocks me out. Patience is the word of the day. Okay, I'm back, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second for the March 16 meeting minutes. To accept them as received, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Those minutes are approved, thank you. We also had a special meeting, March 23. Any additions or corrections to those?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Goss.
If there's no additional corrections to the March 23 special meeting minutes, I move that we approve.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 23, the special meeting, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
None opposed. Someone's raised their hand. When we get to our second ordinances on second reading, that's when we'll take over time for someone who raised their hand as a call in. All right, communications for the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to begin by talking about some of the extra precautions we are taking in our Parks Department right now in our COVID-19 response. As you already know, a lot of our administrative staff is working...
Dave, can you unmute your mic on the laptop?
Sure.
How about that?
There we go.
As you know, a lot of our administrative staff is working remotely. We have also put rotational work plans in place for our labor crews. And I just want to take a moment, as I'm talking about that, to really thank all of our labor workers throughout the city. It's really quite remarkable that through this difficult time, that we've not seen an interruption in our trash pickup, cleaning of our sewer water, wastewater, mowing, weed trimming, street repair. So, our labor crews are to be highly committed for the work they've been doing. They've been really out there and doing a great job, and I thank them very much for that work. We are taking some extra precautions, as many of you may know. The governor did deliver a new executive order today that called for some more closures. So, we're putting together some executive order language between myself and our county commissioners to echo some of that, to follow up with the recommendations coming in from our health professionals, professionals, and the guidelines coming in from the state. Today, we are taking some extra precautions in our Parks Department to reduce contact with touch surfaces. So, you will see basketball rims come down today, playground entrances barricaded off. Any of our areas that have fencing or gates are being locked, that includes the skate park. Tennis nets will be coming down, pickleball nets will not be going up. Our golf courses will be completely closed, that'll be the driving range at Glenn Miller and the full golf course at Highland Lake. Our senior center will remain closed, but you'll just see a lot more restrictions coming to our touch surfaces. I know it is very confusing because people are being encouraged to be outside and get some fresh air. We are under a stay-at-home order, but we do need to really take some extra precautions to reduce contact with touch surfaces, so we are doing that. So, we are asking the community to refrain from utilizing our playgrounds and any of the rest of our touch surfaces during this time. So, you'll see that in our press release, and our Wayne County Commissioners are recommending that all playgrounds and golf courses across the county also be closed to their membership. And that goes for the general public and those that hold memberships to those areas. You will see more language coming out in the near future about other steps that we are taking to protect the community during this time, but that's what I have for you today. As you all know, this is an ever-changing environment with more restrictions and guidelines coming out per day. Any questions on that before I go to my next subject? All right, thank you. I do want to take one more minute to share with you some very good news.
You have a question?
Yes, sir.
You'll have to... Turn yours up. Kelly has a question.
Okay, I apologize. We're all turning our volumes down in here, so we don't have a lot of echoes, so I haven't had my volume turned up. Give me one second. Yes, Counselor Nicholson.
Counselor Cruz-Nicholson, did you have a question for me?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Do you have a question still? Do you mind? I know a lot of the broken dogs, uh, she's gone for her, she's been for her. Are they still like, do you have a...
We are not fully closing all of our green space. We are, however, barricading that parking lot to prevent people from parking there and gathering there. If you can maintain social distance through taking walks, that's fine. We are trying very hard to keep our parks open to the public because we know people need a little green space and they need some ability to go out and take walks. But if we see too many people in one area and congregating, we'll have to start restricting access to other areas of the parks. But right now, walking will be okay.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Mayor.
Were there any other questions on that subject? I do want to share some good news after an extensive and thorough process for a police chief. You may have seen the news today. It is with heavy hearts that we say goodbye to Police Chief Jim Brannum on April 24. Jim has been a tremendous chief to this department, and I'll have a lot more to talk about when it does come time to bid farewell and retirement to Chief Brannum. Upon the announcement of his retirement, we began an extensive and thorough process to select a new chief. And I'm proud to report to you today that Major Mike Britt rose to the top of an exemplary field of candidates, and I want to thank all of them for applying. Mike has 24 years of experience on the department and vast experience in leadership in policing. And I want to take this time to give the podium to incoming Chief Mike Britt and just let him introduce himself to you and the community.
Ron, you want to switch your video? Yes.
I know this is the most cumbersome possible way that I could introduce to you a new police chief, but it is the circumstances we are... It is the circumstances we are forced to deal with today, so we'll make the best of it.
Well, thank you, Mayor. My name's Mike Britt, I think everybody knows me. I'd echo the mayor and wishing Chief Brannum an outstanding retirement. Our department will be what it is today without his leadership. He's been a fantastic chief, and hopefully I've learned a few things from him. I'm very honored and flattered to have been chosen for this position. I want to have an opportunity to continue on with effective and consistent leadership throughout the police department. And also, I would like for you to know, as a council, we've had a lot of successes together. We've been before this body numerous times with special projects, and you've shown enough of the best support for the police department, and I greatly appreciate that. I look forward to keeping this relationship well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all I have today.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, can everybody hear me now? I should change my setup. Jane, can you hear me online?
Can you guys hear Ron?
First up. No. Why me? Standby. Can you hear me?
No.
Standby. Now it's coming back. There we are. That is clear.
Here.
That's the wrong camera. Is that better?
Yes.
All right, thank you. This is quite annoying. Okay, good, she may have fixed it. One particular person was calling in in 10D and the code eroding was knocking me out every time they called in. Anyways, fun times. Ordinances on first reading, do we have a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Goss?
I move that we suspend the rules and read ordinance 24, 2020, and 25, 2020 by title only.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and hear ordinances 24, 2020, and 25, 2020 by title only. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? All right, ordinance on first reading, clerk?
Ordinance number 24, 2020, and appropriation ordinance amending ordinance number 41-2019, known as the 2020 salary ordinance.
This is the mayor's ordinance, correct?
Yes, Mr. President. This is a request to change a job title and job description. If you recall, it's been a few years back, we created a new position within our Infrastructure and Development Department that was formerly known, or currently known as the Community Development Coordinator. That is a position that has really grown and changed, and there is a lot more that I need out of that position, and I would also like to see that position moved into the mayor's office. I can get into more of the details this evening in this presentation, or I can save these details for a finance committee meeting to facilitate this meeting, whichever is your pleasure.
I would say to facilitate this meeting, we would send this to Finance Committee, correct?
Sure.
Okay. And I'm muting you guys in between, so I don't have to keep that here. All right. Refer that to Finance Committee, thank you.
Ordinance number 25, 2020, and appropriation ordinance amending ordinance number 41-2019, known as the 2020 salary ordinance.
This is for the Fire Department?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Two things. First, this is, there is a Scrivener's error here, this is not for salary, this is, we talked about this before, this one is a little bit different, doesn't fall under salary. And I believe Chief Purcell was going to attempt to present this via Zoom this evening, if he is on our list.
He was in there. There, this is back.
There he is.
You might want to turn yours down. Stand by, your hair's going to turn his down. All right, Chief Purcell, you're up.
Mr. President, we're on with Councilman. I am asking tonight, here's consideration for ordinance number 25, 2020, this ordinance we have for a three spot, 2019 budget, of a first spot, about 35, these projects have eight to all four of its costs, eight three mile, the first quarter, the majority of our money out, that's due, the way it's buying that group, and they, uh, they can carry about the shelter facility, the current estimate, facility, the company, bars, acres, the company, the municipal, when they're out, that's a station. This project is up, that makes the ability to find, give us some agreement, which we are creating delay that prevents for the project. Project is by last year, four hundred thousand dollars, current estimate for this project is approximately three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Thus, a reduction to this reappropriation. The second project is the replacement of this, not like modified, accurate replacement plan, outside to select in the last year, new rest of the population range of funds, thus, for all of this, we're asking to reappropriate to other million thousand dollars. Cost of this project is five hundred seventy-five million. The balance of the money for this project will be leveraged to the fee, as amount of eighty thousand dollars, and beginning to 2021, plus. Finally, we request fifty thousand dollars, additional funds, for the building of this early, in the people's, water, and... This project is set based, that's what, one point, in charge of that five hundred thousand dollars, twenty-one, seven, donation, fifty thousand, four, fifty-five thousand dollars, this appropriation will range in our budget, one point one seven five, with the security of this, this project, the final statement, and waiting for this, this is what else? Eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, the projected balance of the money, on, on, at 2020, here, and, just, two million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, including some of this project. Thank you for the information.
So, that projected balance includes using these funds, correct? All right, thank you. This will be referred to Finance Committee, too. No one's opposed? Thank you, Chief.
Ordinance is on second reading?
Ordinance on second reading.
Ordinance number 13, 2020, a special ordinance amending the zoning map for certain parcels from general commercial district to industrial commercial district.
So, this is for Matt Evans, I do believe. This is rezoning. The former Kmart property, correct?
Yes. You're on, Mark, and play the attendant section. Uh, you're pleased to present. I have no, you have an express? Thank you.
It should be unmuted now. Are you there, Mark?
Mark, you should be good to go. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, looking, hear you.
So, what, and the whole there was the teamwork of trying to, uh, consider, utilize that facility for self-storage, and, uh, and, uh, propane, uh, sales, to that facility and kind of grow our present fair, Richmond, uh, location of the street, uh, to the new location there on the west side, take a look at it, uh, came up to the previous, uh, mine, transitioned it to a D-Walk Center, uh, and, uh, we're adding, change, so we have other uses for it, uh, open for any questions you may have, for our, our purpose of what we're doing, anything you may have, we actually try to answer, you know, uh, yes.
Mr. President, I have a question. Yes, Mr. Kappa has a question. Hold on a second.
What are you going to do with the current building you have on East Side?
I just unmuted, yes. Mark?
My only question to Mark is, uh, do you mean presenting landscaping, uh, plans to us?
Yeah, I'll take that now.
If they're looking my man, when I go, we, uh, plan commission, or I can share my screen with everybody, just before we sign that, I'm good.
Okay, Mark, we have a question from Counselor Jeff Kappa. What are your plans to do with the East Side location once you move?
It was, it was a thing, we could see to run out as well.
Because of proximity to the interstate?
We would, we would run both facilities, uh, if, if anything, if we were running by man, I think that we would have housekeeper there, quality storage, then, uh, that facility, that, the first year, it would be managed completely, uh, along with financial, you know, standpoint of the debt. We, we never sell it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you. Yes, Mr. Turner?
What are your plans to adjust, please?
Um, at Richmond, I thought we would demolish and take down the building, but I believe images, uh, so, here, with our, paying logos on it, and, uh, it would really just be a station, or maybe keep it for supplies or something, uh, really, that, that would be , uh, just really not be concerning, because that would be parts of equipment underneath, repairs, out, out, you know, that's where, and she, area.
So, I would ask that, obviously, that's, yeah, I, I think a lot of the landscaping is relevant to the site, in terms of mature trees that are in the very front, uh, front of the property, facing US 40 West, which we'll see by show, I see, um, I would say, given the height, and, you know, that, they spread, pretty sensational, uh, they even do have some pictures from different streets, they, the gases, it's, it's pretty, it's kind of hard to start to check, how big this is, but this part of the street, we're not, not, as you say, uh, it's pretty, uh, as you drive by. Yeah, because I, I know, in exact, this is probably 2013, between the streets, I hope, they won't have.
Any other questions for Mark? Matt, you want to share that plan now?
Yeah. You don't see that?
Almost, there it is, takes a second.
Got it, got it. So, the majority of landscaping, ours, is people built by existing mature trees and strong topside, uh, but, Mark, I did discuss being placed to, but, uh, in, uh, party-wide island streets, would be required for party-wide, that size, which are highlighted, uh, directly within all of the gas basin. I mean, I think I should, you should be able to see my mouse uncovered.
Yes, I can see the hand.
And there are also, there's trees, there's, the rear property of on the door, and that western side, uh, city.
WCTV, want to zoom in on this? Put the audience on. Next time, we'll have another computer, and I'll hook it up to the big TV over here. Actually, there won't be a next time, we'll be back to normal next time. Any other questions for Matt? All right, Matt can stop sharing his screen.
Okay.
Can I get back here?
I have a question for Matt, that, that I, is that a, actually, a plan, or is that one of these?
That's one question, dude. Yeah, I have worked, and my, they, they have general, the landscaping requirements are specific, and the industrial, the first, uh, district, that they are applying for, they're general, uh, general, uh, residential, just, okay.
All right, counselors, if you don't have any more questions, I'll ask everybody there to mute their mics. We have two people, attendees, on the line. I'm going to pull up the 977-2934, allow that person to talk.
That, that should be Gordon Moore, who is presenting, uh...
Oh, that's Gordon Moore? Okay. Who is 977... We mute Gordon then? Who is 977-2934?
It's Larry Parker.
Okay, all right, Larry. Any questions or comments?
None at this time, thank you.
Anyone in the audience listening to speak to this? None?
Move for engrossment.
Do we have a second to engross?
Second.
The motion is second to engross, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? You want to oppose? No?
Mr. President.
Mr. Goss?
I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 13, 2020 to third and final reading, reading by title only.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 13, 2020 to third and final reading. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? Okay, third reading.
Ordinance number 13, 2020, a special ordinance amending the zoning map for certain parcels from general commercial district to industrial commercial.
Any final comments by counselors? I will say, I am pleased that we're going to find a use for this former Kmart building. I know in our part of the state, there are other Kmart buildings that have sat empty for a decade, and roofs are collapsing, and they're kind of a mess, so I'm very pleased that something's going to happen with this, instead of city dormant, and become a problem. Clerk call the roll.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Kelly Cruz-Nicholson.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Kappa.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
Jeff Locke? You're muted, Jeff. Jeff Locke is muted.
Thumbs up.
He said aye. I really looked back on...
Gary Turner.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Jane?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Larry, let me get back to Larry. Hold on.
Aye.
Okay, and Ron Oler.
Aye.
All are in favor.
All right, thank you.
Ordinance number 14, 2020, a special ordinance amending the zoning map for certain parcel from intense multiple-family residential district to limited commercial district.
Is this yours again, Matt? Or is this Gordon Moore? The 97...
My apologies, Gordon.
Matt's unmuted, I think Gordon's unmuted. Are you there, Gordon? Anything you want to tell us about this?
This is, uh, my water office, uh, all of the, uh, general, uh, the north, uh, office building, and, uh, and at that time, this morning, uh, we, uh, first, knowing, uh, for, for, my, my, the, the, that, uh, we, uh, we offered, we settled, uh, all, the reports of the, uh, therefore, the, where this, all part, for their employees, so we're requesting that they're, uh, move the house. Uh, we will have to look down, uh, with, with, we propose, uh, not, not, or happen, uh, comply with, with, or, 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 all the, all the, uh...